Off the list. If they can't find that.
Let's, let's.
Okay, that's the motion. Give us a second. Discussion. Yeah, discussion.
What, what are we, what are we asking whomever to do? I see, see us shooting ourselves not only in the foot but in the head with postponing it to the fifteenth without a good, in a good direction. I sure wouldn't want to have to guess who's going to do what with this list. Because I brought up a concern of, you know, number of units, what kind of units are they? You know, are they one bedroom efficiencies, two bedrooms? If they're supposed to be in the code, what's, you know? I'd like to see us, if we're, if we're going to postpone it, I'd like, like it to be constructively, constructively postponed so somebody knows which direction and who's taking the ball and running with it.
Mr. Berry.
Totally irrelevant. If it's a non-legally non-conforming, it doesn't matter if it's three units with fifteen bedrooms. It's legally non-conforming. Doesn't matter if it's three efficiency units or if it's three, four bedroom units. It's legally non-conforming. Let's just, we got concerns about whether or not these are legally non-conforming.
Multifamily units, multifamily means over three units or more. It's not a duplex, it's not a single. And we listed how many units is in here. It doesn't matter if this was in, if it was in existence before the year 2000, it doesn't matter how many times it was sold. It was already legally non-conforming. It already was legal. Doesn't matter how many times it was sold, so it wouldn't change the list. If you want to just take seventeen and a half Elk off, make it a motion and go forward and read it the second time with that one removed. That would be my suggestion to you.
I'll concede that it doesn't make any difference how many units, you know, what a unit is. The concern that has been expressed is you're looking at the number of on-street parking that is going to be added with making these where you have to just skip the rules and press on. I'm, I'm sorry, you know, granted, this one says that they've got six units and they've got twelve off-street parking spaces, yet we've got another one that says that they've got four units and they only have one off-street parking space. I think it is, is important for us to consider the impact on making these legally non-conforming based on that type of information.
Call the question.
Mr. Berry, I had to hand it up for you.
Again, it's irrelevant. What's there is there. If we don't, if we don't pass this, we will, we will have nothing. It won't matter, we can't, they go on operating. I mean, there's nothing, this, we'll be facing some losses, if anything. This gives us a standard to go by. And the parking is, what's parking is, is there. I don't like it, but it's there.
Ms. Balance.
I move to remove seventeen and a half Elk Street from this list. Motion is there?
A motion.
Yeah, it's already made and seconded.
Second. I'd like to withdraw my motion.
Okay. Who's seconded his motion?
I think I did.
Okay.
You did.
We'll withdraw your second.
Yes.
We're back to the original, taking seventeen and a half Elk off. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Abstain.
Four one one. Ms. Balance.
I'd move to suspend the rules and read ordinance twenty-one forty-two by title only and include reading the addresses on the legally non-conforming multifamily.
Addendum C is.
Addendum C. The addresses on addendum C. So pay attention out there, folks, if there's any of these dwellings on this addendum that if, that we need to know about, please get in touch with us in the next couple of weeks and we'll deal with it at that point. Okay, hold on.
Your will call vote, by the way.
What was the motion again? To read it?
To suspend the rules. Suspend the rules, read by title only with the list less seventeen and a half. Correct? Yes. Addresses only on the list. Excuse me? Addresses only on the list. Oh, right. Uh, Mr. DeVito.
Did you have a second?
You are correct, I did not.
Second.
Made and seconded.
Thank you.
I thought you had a second.
Good ear. Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Poundon.
Yes.
Ms. Balance. Yes. Dr. Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Mr. Raphael.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Mr. Kirk.
Okay, the title, ordinance number two-one four-two, an ordinance clarifying the qualifying legally non-conforming multifamily dwellings in R-1 zoning as of the passing of this ordinance. Addresses thirty-one Elk Street, twenty-four Kansas Street, twenty-five Kansas Street, two Kings Highway, thirty-two Kings Highway, seventy-six Mountain Street, sixty-four Pine Street, one Ridgeway, two sixty-nine Spring, two seventy-five Spring, two eighty-five Spring, one Washington.
For a discussion?
Do you need to pass it on a second reading? I move to pass ordinance twenty-one forty-two on a second reading. Approve.
Second.
A second.
They made and seconded. This will be a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Either one.
What's yours?
Mr. Poundon was the only holdout.
Were you a yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I move to take ten minute recess, please.
I was going to recommend.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Back here at eight o'clock. We're back from recess. Next on the agenda is new business. First is discussion of moratorium on capital improvements to city parks. Ms. Balance and Dr. Kirkpatrick, motion to discuss.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Made and seconded, floor is open.
Okay. I move to give this resolution a number and read it.
Which resolution? I don't have a resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion? Give Mr. DeVito time to read through it real quick.
This is circulated by email.
I believe that it had been circulated by a city clerk.
Mr. Weber has not had time to go to the office today.
You may want to clarify your motion since Mr. Poundon has always had his debate over whether you are approving or just reading. Good point.
Do I need to withdraw my motion and make a new one?
Probably would be best.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, restate your motion.
I move to give this resolution a number and approve it on its first, on its reading and read it for approval. How do I want to say that exactly, please? What is your suggestion?
If you're wanting to add, add its reading to be effective, yes, you would make a motion to give it a number and to approve it and read it.
I move to give this resolution a number and approve it and read it.
Second.
Mr. DeVito, you called up?
I questioned, what, did this come from the city attorney?
No, it did not. I have viewed it last night and it was sent to me by the clerk last night. And I have reservations about it if you're, if that's your question.
Well, it's been the process of this city council that any resolution and any ordinances go to the city attorney to be drafted. And since this one has not been drafted, I feel that this is just a waste of our time.
Mr. Berry, you had to hand it up.
Yeah, I've, I've got some concerns too. One, I guess it's a legal, one thing, it goes back to legal issue and I guess the city attorney maybe can address it too, is whether or not we can really have the authority to issue a moratorium over anything with the parks since the Arkansas Code gives the parks the full and complete charge of authority to build, manage, operate, maintain, and keep in good state of repair, any of their property, public buildings and real property necessary. And I guess then the other issue I have is, it seems like this is not, I understand where, I guess Ms. Balance is coming from and Dr. Kirkpatrick in wanting to control the, the parks, but it looks like this would also have a negative effect upon any construction project within this whole city. And it goes back to micromanaging of what's going on in the city, and I'm not comfortable with that at all. Even though it says in the moratorium that anything that pertains to the health, peace and safety of the general public, each individual variance can come for the city council. That makes us a variance committee and I'm not, I don't think that's what we need to be doing. So I'm not sure also that there's really any, this is, has been pointed out so many times by Ms. Balance. This is a moratorium that's almost an endless moratorium for a year. And I don't understand what the, the purpose is and the life safety issue, that's the emergency and the need for this, except to get control of the parks and actually to prevent something from happening in the Basin Park or at Leatherwood possibly, the two issues that are coming up. And I think this is directly to that point and it's not toward the benefit of the city.
Ms. Balance.
Well, when we look in the handbook for Arkansas municipal officials, which holds the state statutes, when we look at fourteen forty-three five oh two, powers of council generally, B one, "The council shall have the management and control of finances and of all the real and personal property belonging to the corporation." That said, I would withdraw my motion. Can you withdraw your second? And I will move to postpone discussion of this until our next meeting. So we have a chance to think about it and look it over real well.
Motion made and seconded, to withdraw or postpone? To postpone until next meeting, not withdraw.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Well, then I will move again to. I'll defer to my colleague.
I have a question for our attorney. What didn't you feel comfortable about, about that?
Well, I think as, as been pointed out further down the table, you are potentially treading on ground that has been given, although the general is that the council has control. We have adopted a parks commission and by adopting that, you have surrendered certain of your control and power, I believe. Second of all, the point that was made a moment ago, the way this is written, it's going to stop every capital improvement in town.
Only, only on city property?
On city, on, any capital improvement on city property. No sidewalk, no boat dock improvement that there's been funds granted for. You're not going to fix the dam at Black Baths if you get the money because this prevents it as a capital improvement. You're not going to fix the auditorium if their funds come available to make further repairs. You're not going to fix anything in the underground. You're not going to do anything as long as this is in place. You're putting the city at a complete standstill as far as in capital, one city park.
Says right in here that you can come and get special permission.
You're going to act at, on all the projects that are already in place, you're putting a stop to every one of those and making them come back to you and go through this process then.
Well, how about if we struck? Real property including?
Word any capital improvement is still there.
Say again, please.
Words any capital improvement would still be there.
No, where? Where do you see that?
It's actually in your section three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
According to municipal league, they're, they're saying that as long as the foregoing ordinance remains in effect, the council may not interfere with the commission's authority to commence new capital improvements. This council wants to do away with the parks and their ordinance, bring back an ordinance to that effect. Instead of playing around with something you're trying to do away with and that's micromanaging the parks and what they're trying to do and you're including the entire city in your ordinance here or in your resolution. And we don't have that authority to mess with the parks unless you want to do away with the parks authority completely and rewrite their ordinance. It's my opinion anyway, for whatever that's worth.
Ms. Balance.
Well, we have two members of the city council sitting at this table right now who are very involved in, in wanting some of these capital improvements to move forward. So I, it's very clear to me and I'm sure everybody, that of course, they don't want this moratorium because they have personal involvement in, in capital improvements to the city parks. So, you know, I, of course I expected resistance from, from that quarter. However, I would like to see this moratorium go, go forward until we get, get this all kind of straightened out or get some cooperation or something. So it, like I said, it doesn't surprise me a bit that we are meeting resistance where we are because those people are very closely personally involved with capital improvements that they want to make in the parks. So that said, I'll leave it for the public to think about that.
Mr. DeVito.
A little background, under Mayor Harrison, committee, the Basin Park Improvement Committee was named after Mayor Harrison, we functioned as a committee under the city of Eureka Springs. We had members of the Parks Authority, we had a council member, we had people from the Springs Committee, we had a variety of people representing various aspects of this community who have worked going on eight years now to develop a master plan for Basin Park. This master plan has been available to anybody in the public, they can go down to the Parks Department and view the master plan. The component of opening up Basin Spring to reveal the actual basin itself has been something that has been in conversation with this city committee for over five years. This has been brought before HDC, this has been brought before planning, this has been bought before the Rotary Commission, uh, Club. This has been well received by all aspects of the community. It's unfortunate that a few people feel that this is something that they're not party to, but I can assure you that this is a sanctioned committee of the city. We have been functioning in that way for going on eight years now, just like the One Clean Spring Committee or any of the other subcommittees under the parks. This is a recognized committee. This is not about the agenda of certain members and their personal wants. No, this is something that has been an ongoing project for quite a few years with a wide variety of people representing a great many aspects in this community. So this eleventh hour effort by a few people to try and derail a project that has been embraced by the majority of this community and all the people that have viewed it, I find it unfortunate that some people are crafting it in the way that this is a personal issue. No, this is not a personal issue. This is something that we have been out in the open with members of the city council and the parks. So this, it's unfortunate that other people on this table have not been wanting to find out what's going on in their parks and suddenly at the eleventh hour go, oh my goodness, well, this has been going on for at least eight years.
Ms. Balance.
Well, as, as the song goes, the times they are a-changing. And what we have here is perhaps a large or at, at least a portion of our community has been for quite some time complacent. They stood back, they, they didn't want to get involved, they just went on about their business and, and, you know, grumbled quietly among themselves. But what we have now is a portion of the community who has decided that they would take it, take the burden of, of standing up and, and representing some of the people who have not been represented for, for quite some time. A lot of the people who haven't been represented for a long time actually have a voice at the table right now. And be that it is, as it may, whether this has been going on for eight years or not is really beside the point. We're here right now. We're here right now. I'm certainly not at this table because I think this is a great lot of fun. I stood up to be on this council because I was very concerned about a lot of the things that were going on in our community. I kept saying, people would talk to me and say, we don't like this, we don't like that.
Point of order.
Well, you know.
Balance.
Well, you know, why doesn't somebody stand up and say something?
Point of order.
And I looked in a mirror.
State your point of order, sir.
Point of order is that we're discussing a moratorium on, on the parks, not whether or not we represent constituency here, let's stick to the topic.
Okay.
So with, with, with that in mind.
We still have a motion on table to withdraw or postpone?
I, I, I appeal the decision of the chair.
The motion, the motion to withdraw was voted down.
Okay, that's right, two, two to three. All right, so it's still open?
I'm here, I'm here to speak up for some of the people. My, my other colleagues are here to speak up for some of the people. That's what we're here for. The people that want me to speak up for them say they're not happy with what's going on. That's why I'm here. Not because I think it's such a great lot of fun to sit here and spend a whole night trying to take care of the business of the city, although it is an honor to serve my community.
Doc.
My main concern is if parks want to put a, another cell tower, magnetic springs, they can do what they want to.
Yep.
They can do anything they want to, anytime they want to without any input or say-so from the city. And from the people, from the council. If the council didn't have any say-so, the citizens do not have any say-so either.
Yep.
If we can't help the citizens out, we're just, I just don't go for it.
Mr. DeVito.
I was just pointing out that we have an ordinance that won't prohibit the erection of a cell tower in the historic district.
I'm using that, excuse me, I was using that for an example, you know, they can do anything they want to, any place they want to, on their own without any say-so from anybody. Nobody's trying to take up their money, their tax money away from them. Nobody's telling them they can't do their normal maintenance. And I have to admit, they do a fine job on the maintenance. And they've done a lot. But when they just want to do something because they want to do something and a few people say, oh yeah, that's a good idea, I don't go for it. I think we should, I think we should have some say in it so the citizens can have some say in it as well. Right now, they have nothing to say about it.
Yep.
Anything else? Mr. Berry.
No, they do have something to say about it. If you really think that the parks is doing such a bad job, they can always enact the referendum.
Point of order, point of order. Nobody said the parks was doing a bad job.
Abolishing the parks.
Nobody's talking about abolishing the park. Point of order.
State your point of order.
Nobody, my colleague is putting words in people's mouth that did not come out of their mouths. Nobody said the parks is doing a bad job. Nobody said they want to do away with the parks. Point of order.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Let me rephrase this.
Rephrase.
If there's so many people out there who think that the parks can do anything they want.
You just said the parks can do anything they want. He says the parks can do anything they want.
Didn't say that.
No, I didn't say that.
And I didn't say it. But I said, y'all said that, if you feel that way, there's other alternatives. What I said was according to the state law, was that we had no authority over their buildings. If you don't like their buildings, there's other alternatives besides the moratorium is not a solution. That's a solution on the whole city. And that's not, you are, are looking at the parks in particular and trying to stop a singular project that we don't know if there's five people, ten people, or twenty people against it versus two hundred people for it. So.
Ms. Balance.
This is a ridiculous moratorium.
As far as, as far as the one project that my colleague referred to, it's not a building, it's an excavation. Book doesn't say anything about excavation. They said, it says they can build, they can build, they can build. Doesn't say they can excavate, dig a big hole in our Central Park.
Mr. DeVito.
We've exhausted every avenue on this issue. I'd say we move on to the next.
Mr. Weaver, any input?
Only to clarify what I said. You have certain control by statute and by ordinance. You don't have the authority that you're trying to assert. But the parks can't go out and sell and encumber the park property. They can't go put the cell tower in if it violates the other restrictions of the code. They can't go decide to build something in a historic district that violates the historic rules. They can't go and violate any of the other code. There are restrictions though on how much control you assert over them. And the, the passages that were read a couple of weeks ago or a couple of meetings ago exerts some of the things that they have power over that you do not control as the council. So I'm not telling you that there's no control at all. There are still things that they can't do. If they decide that they want to sell the entire Leatherwood Park and they sell it, they're in clear violation, you can stop them. They can be stopped by other court actions, all kinds of ways to.
all kinds of ways to stop them. But when they want to build a facility, the way the code is written, the only way you're going to stop that legally that I can see is to dissolve the Parks Commission, and there is a procedure to do that.
Any further? Number two, new business. Ordinance to codify parks 1% or 1/4 cent sales tax, or 1/4 cent tax, I'm sorry. And that is mine. I'll be honest with you, folks, I don't recall taking this one on. I don't recall this one.
Let's take it off.
I've...
Yeah, let's not codify it, good idea.
It was a discussion, Mr. Pownal was concerned about the vote, but the, but an ordinance not putting that vote in the code, and...
Because I went back and read the minutes and I...
It's probably a good idea.
Yeah, it did. Yes. Yes.
There was a petition signed by approximately 250 people in 2006 to put on the ballot an ordinance that would eliminate the 1/4 cent sales tax for five years and replace it for one, that basically in perpetuity. And in, the mayor has a copy of that.
You mean the sunshine clause?
Right, it was, well, it was the sunset clause, it was taken off. And supposed to be, it was supposed to be amendment to that ordinance, the ordinance number was 1906, and that ordinance was to be amended to reflect that vote, which, by the way, was 67% for that, and I also have copies of the actual vote. So, what the next step is, I'm not sure. Evidently, that amendment was not done to ordinance 1906.
So, that's really what's needed.
I believe that's the issue.
Yeah, that's probably where I got lost, actually. If it's just to take the sunshine clause out, then it's here, but it says to remove, to delete the five-year limit on existing living, to read as follows. So, I guess the question was here, for a period of five years, as in, it's listed in the ballot top.
Basically, as I understand it, the vote that was taken approved removal of the language, but the language is still within our code, and we can write an ordinance to remove that language confirming the people's vote. It's not, though, required that that happened for the tax to continue to be collected. The tax is not being illegally collected at all. The vote was taken, it was confirmed by the election officials, it's official. But if we want to amend our code, just for clarity's sake, normally when we, if the council had had the power to make the change to the code, we would have put a repealer clause, and that language would have automatically been removed by the code people, because it was done by, and required to be done, by a vote of the people. That language didn't remove it necessarily out of the code. So, it's not that big a deal. And if you want an ordinance, I think, I can confer with Bruce and check with the municipal league.